Okay.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Yep.
Want to hear a card? All right, the July twenty seven, twenty twenty three City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee Hybrid Meeting is called to order at twelve oh two. Roll call. I guess I'll start. My name is John Halen. I am wearing a turquoise T-shirt. I'm sitting in the center of the room on site. He him.
Carl.
Oh, hi, I'm Carl Burnett, Quebec Vice Chair. I'm in person today. Wearing a gray short sleeve shirt.
Thank you. Aaron online.
Aaron.
Sorry, I'm here. This is Aaron Rivers. I'm on virtually today. I apologize for the delay.
No worries. Thank you, Aaron. Amanda. Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie Upson. I'm here in person. She her pronouns and I'm wearing a black dress. You can see the mic. Oh, so I was trying to stay away from the mic because I was chewing, so.
Liz Woodfin.
Liz Woodfin here online. Cannot see me on my screen. I have blonde hair, blue eyes, and I'm wearing a tan blazer at the top.
Thank you. Derek.
Hi, Derek Hoffbauer. He him pronouns in person. I chose to wear plaid today.
Cory.
Hey, I'm Cory. I use she her pronouns. I'm blonde. My hair is up in a ponytail. I have a gold wire rim glasses and a little red sweater. And my camera will be off a lot because I am in my office.
Great, thank you. Liz.
Liz Deetha Martin, she her. I am Zoom today and wearing a black sweater.
Thank you. Nick.
Hi, Nicholas Nick Radon. I'm here present in the city council chambers. I have blonde hair, blue eyes, and starting to grow white beard and wearing a black polo today.
Amazing specificity, thank you. Whitney.
Hi, Whitney. Whitney Bennett. I use she her pronouns. I am online today and I am I have light hair up in a bun and I'm wearing a maroon jacket.
Thank you.
Great. Sir volunteer to read the land acknowledgement. Okay. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River, is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wano Lama, Warm Springs, Wasco, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Okay, we'll move for the approval of the June twenty second, twenty twenty three draft minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All second is John. All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Hi.
Now we have time for public comment. Is there anyone online or in person that would like to speak during public comment?
Emily Hammond, can you unmute?
Oh, looks like we have a member of the public on site. Can you say it into the microphone and your name and where you're from?
Daphne Halen, respect everyone and treat everyone the same.
Thank you.
Here, thanks, Daphne.
There any other public comment? Okay. Moving on, agenda item number five.
We are welcoming Andres Portella to Quebec, and I believe that he may pop on just a little bit later, and we need to rearrange the the order of things, so we'll move on to the Quebec member update, which I have. Unfortunately, Kelly Crowley had to resign from the committee just a few days ago, which is a big loss because we really appreciated everything that Kelly brought in her spirit and also just knowledge of all things accessibility. Luckily, Liz Woodfin is now an official member, and she's accepted joining as an official member, so we have a fully staffed Quebec contingency, which is great. So welcome to Liz. And again, we're hopeful that Kelly will be able to step back in at a later date, but that'll be down the line. For now, thank you, Liz, very much for being part of that.
Welcome, Liz.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome, Liz. Okay, item number seven, Brooks Alley, how to incorporate accessibility into development, question and answers. You have Tobias Marks, the Parking Services Division Manager. If you could please come on up and make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
I will do my best.
Thank you for coming today.
Sure.
So what's going on with Brooks Alley?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out. There are two upcoming, one near term project, one probably much more long term. I can give you a general overview. I do not have a presentation prepared for it. The the short term version came out of gonna have to say this, the best that I know and the the most straightforward out of a larger project for for the use of like tourist funding that potentially is available to make some improvements to areas in downtown. Out of that longer or that bigger project desire came a short term version that was expressed by a group of councillors at the Stewardship Subcommittee, trying to say this as correct as I can. So Ben Hampson, our Economic Development Manager, and 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 me from the Transportation Mobility Department went to work, engaged group of local stakeholders and downtown business owners to think about what can we do in to make Brooks Alley safer in an interim until we do a larger project? We started out with an idealistic idea of just closing it down and making it pedestrian friendly that was not met with as much positive desire as everybody had would have thought. And so we realized that, and so we really shifted gears and asked the business business owners, property owners, and some community members that joined those. We did a series of three community meetings, asking what 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 do you think? What are your pain points? What could work? Through the course of those three meetings, we came up with a workable solution that we hope to be able to bring back to the Stewardship Committee, city council, in a again, like to just keep them updated, and hopefully within the next couple months potentially implement, which are very straightforward. We would actually start on the top end, so we would actually place a gate, like an access control gate, at the north end of Brooks Alley, which is like at Looney Bean. That would prevent people from driving in against the traffic, because Brooks Alley flows from actually south to north, Franklin to Brook Street. And a lot of people drive through the opposite direction. There's some traffic that just goes to the property owners and the parking spaces that are like behind some businesses on that north end, kind of like on the height of the North Mary Point parking lot. But there's also significant traffic more in the afternoon and weekend hours from people that are driving the opposite. It's often it's a combination. We we don't have hard data on who it is. So when I'm saying this right now, this is a lot of my interpretation and or our, meaning like our internal stuffing team interpretation of who drives against the flow of traffic. It's probably tourists. It's people that are not seeing the sign. It's often some right chair drivers, so we want to prevent that. Because Brooks Alley, while it is an alley, a street, a promenade, and we all are saying this in a variety of things, because I think everybody has a different opinion. There are some concerns for safety, especially children playing, walking pedestrians, mainly around the Commons, where the Breeze Bay comes in from Northwest Wall to to the Commons. We feel that putting the gate on the top in the north end will prevent some of that those drivers to come through. The gate will not need any access control from anybody. It's just going to be contact operated. So if a vehicle comes following the regular flow of traffic, the gate will open. We hope now moving down a little bit that we do a lot of visual improvements, meaning doing sidewalks that we can mark on the ground at every pedestrian entrance from the parking lots into the alley, so that drivers that are driving through see that there is potential pedestrian traffic. We want to focus on creating some bollards, lighted bollards along the Commons and the Breeze Bay that just have a bear like show that, hey, pay a little bit of attention. Something is different here. Those bollards would be illuminated. They would be solar powered so that we don't have to invest a lot of money in infrastructure. So at nighttime, they illuminate it so people can see them. We also are thinking about doing markings on the ground that are very mimicking like a pedestrian area or like a larger like crosswalk. I shouldn't have said sidewalk for the pedestrian areas, crosswalk markings on the ground. We will do the same on the south along the South Mary Pond Lot where a pedestrian entry, like a walkway, comes from the parking lot into from the promenade, so that there's a marking. We also entertaining the idea of placing larger signs at the entry point to Brooks of Franklin that visualize that this is a we don't really have a name for it yet. It's not like there's this fancy Dutch word, which I cannot say. It's not a closed road, right? It's a it's a multi use alley. Basically, we know that there's vehicle traffic going through. We know bicyclists are using it, pedestrians using it. We know we need it for delivery access for the businesses that are serviced through that. But we feel there's a way to model a little bit a sign that shows that this is a multi use street. So there's not an official sign yet in like MUTCD guidelines. So we're thinking it's more a decorative sign that says Brooks Promenade. Watch for like pedestrians or like share the street, something like that on both sides, so people can see that. We hope that we can redo where the signs currently say local access only. Move them down a little bit because they kind of like tucked ten feet up in the air and nobody really can see them. So we can, while it's already hard enough to get somebody to pay attention to a sign, think if you put it at ten feet, it's kind of like just my habit. So we want to move those down, potentially put some LED lights around them so they're more visible at nighttime as well. So that's kind of like what we're doing here. We had in the course of the conversations with stakeholders, we thought should we do speed humps, right? Should we raise the pedestrian entry levels from the parking lots and raise them up a little bit, three or four inches? But we felt that that becomes with a lot of feedback that we received, probably would not be good for people walking, but also not be good for people with with like a disability or that need a different accessibility methods to come around, because it would really interrupt their flow of traffic. As far as so we scrap that, we leave it as even as we can. We will probably will go through to see if there are some areas that need to be improved, like or repaired, that we do this as part of this this project. As far as the gate in the north end, we are positioning it that we potentially can do a self self performed. I'm gonna say self performed is like a city internal cruise, like do some beautification to that island where that pace station is right across where from Looney Bean. Because the sidewalk really could use some improvements, potentially make it a little bit nicer, put new ADA rims there and leave a significant space that is not wide enough for a car, but wide enough for for people walking, groups of people walking, somebody in a wheelchair to actually pass by the gate area without actually being interrupted. So that's kind of the gist of it. We do not have design plans yet for it. We have some very cryptic there like ten percent drawings of like where what should go, but that's about where we are right now.
Um, would you would it be accurate in saying that the pushback from the local businesses was primarily just for deliveries?
Yes.
Okay, and that they're not open to having a commercial zone in the parking lot? Next, right next to it?
Yes and no. So I think that the challenge, the challenge really comes with loading in in the doubt becomes let me start over. The challenge will not become just loading for Brooks Street or Brooks Promenade. The challenge will become loading in in downtown, right? We know that's something that we're already looking at. What makes it a little bit more difficult is that currently we are basically saying most of the deliveries, or we know that most of the deliveries for the downtown businesses are happening in the right of a on Northwest Wall Bond and in the alleys in between, right? And we're kind of like at the point where I'm like, do we really care? And I'm being just straight and open. Do we really care if we have a semi truck at nine o'clock in or eight o'clock in the morning taking up angled parking spaces parallel, although they shouldn't, because they do deliveries? Probably not, because the traffic isn't there at the time. The parking demand isn't there. So and we don't want to create another problem by by saying you can't do that. When it comes to Brooks, there is significant, and we have some data from a survey that was done a couple years ago by the DBBA, and we we are trying to get analysis more now. Like what actually is the delivery traffic that's happening in the alley? The problem with the lots is that the way they're currently designed, most trucks and delivery vehicles will not be able to make it in and make it out. The second issue with deliveries, which we is also the Tower Theater, which is something that we all can really be celebrating that we have like a small look like locally owned theater in the heart of a downtown. That's hard enough to have these days. And they we need to make accommodations for that, to have their vehicles, like the tour buses parked there without impeding traffic too much. And and kind of like, that's our issue that we are facing that like when we have one truck that's pulling over to the side, not an issue, right? But when we have during certain times of the day, three, four, or five that are backing up, it becomes an issue. And we hope that we can find a better solution to manage loading in downtown or commercial delivery for yet we don't have that. I I think, and some people in the room will know that I've pushed back a little bit on that, that the argument was made that if you would close Brooks Alley or Brooks Promenade, that would push all the delivery traffic into downtown streets and would cause more unsafe situations there. There is some validity to that, but it's also not a hundred percent accurate, because we already have a lot of deliveries happening, right? Would it push more there? Yes. Would it make it worth? Probably. Do delivery companies generally comply with local rules if they're established? Yes, because they don't have a desire to get citations and I could that I can provide you use cases from other cities, large and small, that have been to like what's called smart zones that are loading during certain times of the day, then they become parking later. There's technology that can do that. The delivery companies rather pay to park there than they pay citations, right? But we don't have those programs yet. That's something that we are still developing. It's very new for us. So I think I wouldn't want to lean myself too far out of the window to say that's a potential solution.
You know, when I think of Brooks Alley, I think of how it's chaos as far as pedestrians and bicycles and all sorts of stuff. By putting in bollards along the lane, wouldn't that just encourage people to drive faster? Because they would think that they are now in a safe place to drive faster. I mean, doesn't the chaos kind of purposely slow down traffic in Brooks Alley?
So what we what we what we're hoping that the bollards can do along the Commons only is that they can actually narrow the drive lane a little bit, but still may leave it wide enough so that like vehicles can like first responders, EMTs, and like fire trucks can make it through. And by doing that, we would actually narrow it, and we can have signs before that say like, slow down, watch for pedestrians. I think that can achieve that slowing down the traffic a little bit and just have a barrier for drivers that they actually need to pay attention, right? And I think that with with like crosswalk markings on the ground, like you would see them in a crosswalk, that drivers have to pay more attention, I think can can achieve that more sense of safety, especially because I think what we do keep in need to keep in mind in this entire conversation, I think sometimes can get lost. We kind of know, we have measured with tubes and radar, like how many vehicles are going through the alley, right? So it's under two hundred a day. I cannot tell you right now how many going the opposite and the right direction, because I don't have that memorized. But I know that number was about two hundred vehicles a day going through. So we are we are dealing with a finite amount. And I think we just need to do a better job also to peer enforcement that we like if some we see people driving through that are not authorized to drive through, that we find a way to enforce that, which I don't have the perfect answer to that yet. If I would, I would give it to you, but that's my opinion on it.
And is it worth it to look into? I mean, if it's primarily for deliveries or business access, is it worth it to deliver or to look into raising bollards where you just give the delivery company is a garage opener and they go up to the alley, hit the button, the bollards go down, they drive in, and then it goes back up?
Yeah, so that the parking nerds dream come true would be like automated bollards like save and come up from the ground, right? The problem is that, and you know, it's like really funny, because I'm usually like like with all this stuff going on, I'm usually always trying to find the positive spin on it. So I usually don't start sentences that say the problem with that is, in this case, the problem really is where it's located. That like Franklin, Northwest Franklin is a very busy street. And so where would we put? We looked at this. That was our idea, right? Can we do a gate or bollards? But where to position them in Brooks becomes a real challenge, because to prevent somebody from driving in that doesn't have access and preventing them from backing up back into Franklin, they have to be right in the beginning. If they're right at the beginning, now you're dealing with a traffic nightmare from vehicles wanting to make a right turn and left turn into Brooks that are doing deliveries, that it will be piled up. So when we reviewed it with the traffic engineer and with our director and other people, we're like, there is no good solution yet, right? Like we can beam them in yet, so which would be great, but we're not there yet. And so I think that was that was a challenge with the technology and even with hardware like bollards to do it. That's where we started. We started with like, can we do manual bollards? And we had a certain time of the day, we just placed them. They're gone. We give a key to the Tower Theater. If they need to get somebody in or not, great. But that's a significant daily live for somebody to have to go there at a certain hour to remove them and put them back. Next step is automated bollards. It's a significant expense. So we are like for we looked at quotes that we received for the summer between a hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to do both sides with automated bullets that are going up and down. Those would be feasible to do if the money is there. They can be installed in this climate. They have like a heater around them, so they don't get stuck in the winter, right? But to manage that access from a high traffic street like Franklin, we feel would actually just be asking for trouble, not only from a traffic, but also from a from a safety point, too, because I drive that route three, four times a day. I still go through Brooks since we started doing this, because I want to know what's happening there. I go to the parking lots a lot. And it's stressful for me to make a right turn into even into the parking lot, because you have to you have to watch the bikers on the street. You have to watch the pedestrians, then you do that on a vent, so when you have the farmer's market, it's not fun, right? And so I think that was a big concern.
This is Carl. Talking about bikes for a minute. I guess the Brooks Alley is actually I think it's technically part of the Deschutes River Trail, right? It's or it's at least a connector between different sections of the Deschutes River Trail. And it's nice that bikes are allowed to go both ways there, even though motor vehicles are only allowed to go one way. But I wonder whether there was discussion about designating an actual bike path or lane through the alley.
There was. There was. At one of the drawings that we had in one of the meetings, I think we had one dedicated bike lane, two way. Either way, left or right, we decided to put it like left and right, meaning east or west. And I think we decided to put it along the west, along the brick wall. But then we realized that that's where all the drainage is. So bike lane over the drainage, not good. Second, we then still know that traffic will still go over it. It cannot be a protected one. There would not be enough space to make it make it a protective one with like delineators or barricades. That wasn't feasible. And then on top of that, that would change everything from the space now, too, because it's not very wide, right? For trucks. Now the trucks will be next to it. And if there would be respectful to park outside the bike lane, now you're you're creating even more hazards, right? Because now you have the bike, you have the brick wall here that has entrances, pedestrian walkways from the parking lots into the alley. Then you have the bike lane. Then you have a delivery truck parked here, so that it it just it is as much as I don't like to say it like this, it is not as easy as everybody thought it would be. And I think we realized that and yeah, as much as we would like to do more, I think there's not, we haven't found a good solution yet.
Liz D.
Oh, yeah, thanks. So so I think you'd mentioned having instead of having a lot of signs that are do not enter, one way caution pedestrians, you know, where that's overwhelming in its own way. Can we go for more of artwork and a sign that signals what happens in this space? So I'm sort of envisioning like a sculpture that shows children playing, bikes riding, somebody in a wheelchair, and then maybe even a delivery truck, you know? It's like, instead of the kind of making it uglier and maybe even more overwhelming, just signal to people what happens here. Like this is this is a place for all all these different uses. Have you already been thinking about that?
Yep, I think that's a great question. So if you couldn't tell that I have an accent, so I do have an accent and I'm German. So the German, the Germans, but now the Europeans have a sign that's blue and then has white people on it that are playing and walking, which is placed in front of in five different versions or probably more at the beginning of every residential area, right? And it's called Spielstraße, which is basically translated in like playing street. So and it indicates to people that, hey, you need to slow down here, because this is a street where multiple things are happening at the same time. So there's the sign that I mentioned that we hope to design is something like that. We can be very flexible with that, because it would not be a regulatory sign. So the the rule seems to be always if it's a regulatory sign, we need to follow what's called MUTCD guidelines. If it's not a regulatory sign, we have a little bit more freedom to do something that we have for the neighborhood signs that we're doing, the gold and is it purple and gold? So I think we hope we can do something like that. It would be a rectangle sign like that is kind of like our goal with that would be similar to what you just said. Communicate in a fun, easy to understand way, what what street you're actually entering. So hopefully to signalize people that they need to pay more attention.
As far as like the bikes, could it be a walking bike situation? So sometimes there's a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic, fast bikes going through, it could actually be scary for people walking with kids or dogs or something like that, too.
Yeah, there are some bikes that are riding through there really quick, and it's not just e-bikes. I know we talk about e-bikes a lot right now, but it's also pedal bikes. It's a we are we thought about that. We think that there might be if we can through the improvements we're doing right now, if that doesn't get a better safety result, maybe we need to prohibit riding a bike and ask people to step down. That is not a decision that has been made, but it was something that was mentioned. A little bit weird about that is we have a bike shop right in the center of it. So that's kind of like, how do we manage all these things? And I think there's, it's good to have the conversation about it, because as we are growing as a city, I think it's important to keep a little bit of these like small town conversations going that we incorporate their businesses and the community outreach and that. But that is something that might need to happen in the future if it can't get better.
Do you know how many injuries or accidents happen on Brooks Alley in a given year?
So no, so there's no crash data for Brooks Alley at all.
Okay.
So there's no official crash data. It is all perceived data and near misses. And what we have done as part of this, we actually created a form internally at the City of Bend. It's very simple, anonymous, where somebody that will be distributed to businesses along Brooks Alley that if they observe like a near term miss, they can send this into us. We can track it, because one of the building owners along Brooks has security cameras and has offered that if you give me a date and time, I'll check if I can see what actually happened, right? So we can quantify that a little bit more. I think the more the ones that everybody that's more known is like the vehicle a little bit ago that actually drove down the stairs. That was fun. Not fun. I mean, you know, that was sarcasm. That I think that the other day I was down there, there were three cars that were turning around in the common in the middle of people and tried to go back, because there was a lift that was blocking for the 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 project next to the North Mary Pond Lot, the building that's being done, the renovation. They were lifting something up and everybody had to turn around. And so not a near miss, but a potential near miss, because when you're stressed out as a driver, and now you're going, you're stuck, and you're turning around in a pedestrian area on a commons, it's easy to miss something, right? Even with all the cameras that all the cars have now, but yeah.
And where are you proposing that the bollards go in by the commons?
So the the bollards at the commons will go basically along the driveway. So a lot on the side of the Commons Cafe. Basically, when you look, when you go down there and when you look at the markings on the ground, you can see different colors in the pavement, so they would follow that.
Okay.
And there would be a good amount on the west side and a little bit less on the east side where the Breeze Bay is. And we also talked to the bike shop there to make sure that we leave one that's a little more spaced, because they usually take like their cargo bike, where they put the bikes like Because they usually take like their cargo bike where they put the bikes like perpendicular on it to deliver. And so we want to create like a mini area for them where they can actually go easy in and out. So that's an idea that we have. We're looking into that if it's feasible, getting the quotes for that right now. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm just imagining like, I remember seeing a city in England that removed crosswalks and stoplights and everything, and they just made their town square chaos and it slowed people down. And I think that Brooks Alley definitely benefits from the fact that it's just people, it's chaos, you know? It's like, I mean, when you drive on that, you have to slow down. Whereas if you're driving by the box factory, you, like, people go forty five there, you know? Like, you would never think to do that in Brooks Alley.
You'll be surprised. But I
People have bollards. It's great.
With everything you say, I wouldn't want to officially say that's how we treat it. So.
Great. Nice question. Actually, I appreciate the, you know, the thought process coming into this and getting this in front of our committee. I mean, I think trying new things out is good and kind of seeing how they go and making adjustments. I mean, I can see this as a, as a pretty good next step for solving some of the conflicts. But my one question is, has there been any thought about working with like Ben Park and Rec about getting some kind of sidewalk or pathway just on the west side of that lot to create more opportunities for pedestrians and just kind of, you know, because I always like want to kind of walk through the park, but then you end up going down to the river. So it connects right back in, but something that creates more of like a pedestrian area and that would maybe free up some more, you know, traffic in that popular alley or create kind of an alternative route that you could guide people through. So just thinking about that, I think it's just kind of a rough trail right now, definitely not ADA. Accessible, but something like that, that kind of has an alternative route that you can just kind of get around the parking lot and back right. You know, where the crosswalk is coming across.
So now that Ben, I'm not aware of any official conversations, but that wouldn't be my area of expertise. What I do know is that Ben Parks and Rec has done a lot of construction work to make that pathway along the Deschutes better and upgrade some. What I also know is that in the larger context, on the larger project in the future, we just went out for RFP for design, like for companies to come and give us design charrettes or options for that. There is some property that the city actually owns that, or the property that the city owns around the commons extends a little bit more into the park than people think. And so I think these are areas that we can look at, look at as part of that project to like, that's kind of like, can we expand the commons a little bit? Can we make that access better, larger? So I think that's a good point that I can take back to that.
Great, thank you.
Have you, this is Nick. Have you engaged the fire or emergency response people yet? Just because I know like Looney Bean and stuff, they've got to get access.
Yep, fire and police have been like part of all conversations. Like very from the beginning, even in the past, when it came to, when it came to Brook, uh Brooks, fire never really had a concern. So fire always said we can service it from the parking lots. And one thing I think that it's always, that's my personal opinion, some of the best drivers we probably have in town are like fire truck drivers. They, they make it like through everything, right? And if they push the occasional car out of the way, you know, they bring it to the shop and repair it. But no, I'm kidding. But like, there are good drivers and I think they, they, they generally had never had a concern about being able to service it.
Thanks Toby. The last article that appeared right before I left on vacation said there's more than two million dollars available for this project. What does that mean?
So I will say this the best that I, I'm aware of it and you know that I don't, I don't oversee those funds. So what I know is that there is two point three six million dollars in tourism funds that were, my understanding is they were the result of a, a legal situation a couple of years ago from like room tax fees or something like that. They're in a pocket, in a bucket somewhere that need to be spent for tourism related funds. We didn't really know, the city didn't really know what to do with these funds, how to spend them. So I believe this would be a question more for Ben Hampson to answer better, but I will do my best. So Ben Hampson, our economic development manager, engaged, visited Bend to ideate around like what could we do with these funds? And so I think we started all over the place. I think when the article, I think I recall it, talked about there is two point three six million dollars in tourism funds available to do a tourism project. I think that we it's fair to say that we think it would be a significant project to spend two point three six million dollars on Brooks, Brook Street and the commons. I don't think that is, as far as I know, that hasn't been decided. Maybe I, I think there has been a lot of communication that hasn't been ideal from the beginning on this. And for that, if I contributed to that, I think I, I, I apologize for that. I think that in general, we hope that we can use some of these tourism funds and I think we should spend them because they're just currently sitting. I know there's also some other desires for these funds to be potentially spent, I have heard on like, what's the bridge, the Mirapon? Pedestrian Bridge, I believe some councils have expressed that. Again, that would be not be my, I say this all very careful because it's not my area, not my expertise. So I hope you understand that.
So, if I may, and you can just correct me if I'm wrong. This project did not come through safety like any of our other safety or accessibility projects. It didn't rise up as this is the spot within the city. It came because there's some money available and, and some businesses concerned in particular about that wrong way traffic. But you know, as far as you all go, you just thought you might want to know that, that it's really, I, I think it's really not accurate to call it a safety project in that sense. You know, I think all of our safety projects are responding to data that says there's a safety concern at this spot. And that's just not how this came about. Yeah, thank you. Oh, and I'm Barb Campbell and I serve on city council. I'm in my fifties for another four months. I have salt and pepper hair and I'm very short.
Uh, we have about a minute left. Does anyone have any remaining questions or is there anything else you'd like to say?
I think I'm good.
Any questions online?
Thank you to Stephanie for sharing this image. Stephanie Bitteridge, thank you. We added it there. So great.
Yes, that's it. So often, so pet peeve of mine, often you can find them different ways. So if there's reduced speed, you actually see them this symbol in one way or the other as part of a larger sign where you would have the speed limit in it and then other messaging with it. And people are used to that. And they also are, they're not just put on one pole somewhere to the side. They actually also used often left and right of the street so that the entryway into that street is already narrowed down to that. So it's interesting, actually.
All right.
Thanks Toby. Thanks.
Okay.
John, if we could back up and just invite Andres to join us.
Yeah.
Great.
Hey, everyone. My name is Andres Portella. My pronouns are he/him. I visual description, I have cocoa brown skin, an Afro and clear glasses. A little bit about myself, I am coming into this space with a little bit experience in the space that y'all hold expertise in. I am super grateful to be the Equity and Inclusion Director for the City of Bend and can't wait to work with y'all in a variety of different ways. The work that y'all do and assistance with doing is very near and dear to my heart because I started my work in civil rights and equity work, doing ADA compliance in fair housing. So deep love and passion for the work that y'all do and are going to help us do as a city department. So I'm grateful to say hey.
Right on. Good luck selling your house. I heard your talk yesterday at A-Track. Hope you can make it.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. Okay. I have number eight, accessibility in housing. Melissa Camagna.
Hi, everybody. My name's Melissa Camagna. I'm the Affordable Housing Coordinator here at the City of Bend. Visually, I never know how to describe myself. I think I'm shoulder length, hair, brown hair, glasses, kind of dressed like a librarian today. I don't know. But I'm here to talk to you, just to give you a quick update. Conversations are ongoing about accessibility in housing and Carl came and gave some excellent public comment at our last Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting. And part of his public comments stirred some conversation about our scoring criteria for city funded projects. And an observation, I brought up an observation at the same time that in our scoring criteria, we don't have bonus points or any kind of scoring for projects that build more than the minimum number of accessible units. And so that is something that our committee will be discussing next month. We also have to have that go through our legal department here because of fair housing guidelines and for fair housing rules, we have to make sure that that is compliant. So that's exciting work that's on the forefront. I also want you to know that I am having very important conversations with different agencies and including state level agencies about this. And almost everybody's looking at the same thing and wondering how we incentivize building more than the minimum number of required units. Emily Hammond is new with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And, and she did a training a couple of weeks ago and one of the slides that her colleague shared showed that in Oregon, we need six thousand wheelchair accessible units to be constructed every year. So we're short as a state a bunch. And so the work that we're doing together is kind of furthering that conversation and figuring out how do we make strides? It's not just folks that need wheelchair access today. It's also considering aging in place so that folks don't have to move or do major renovations to their property. So why am I here to see you today? One of my conversations that I'm having in particular with homeownership agencies is the cost to build a, an affordable, single family home is X. And they, a lot of the feedback I'm getting is if we were not required to build these from the Fair Housing Act, there, there aren't any regulations for affordable homes, single family homes. What's the incentive? Because it's very, they're saying it's very cost prohibitive to build accessibly if there isn't a requirement. And so in our conversations, we need your help. We need to understand exactly what kind of units are needed. Is it rental? Is it homeownership? How many bedrooms, stairs or no stairs? And once I can collect all this information, I can give it to our affordable developers and they can figure out a cost point. So if the biggest need is three bedroom, single family homes, they can figure out how much that will cost. Then we'll look at the gap, how much more it costs for them to build that. And we can be really strategic and look at funding sources to bridge the gap. It's just creative problem solving. So I'm going to share my screen just so you get a little preview at the form that I created. And in a moment, I'm going to put up a QR code just to ask you to take the, the quiz. And after today, I'll send Cassandra with some language. And for those of you that work in our disabled nonprofits in the community, I do request that you push it out. It's anonymous. There's no personal information. We just need to understand what the need is. And to be clear, it could be your need, it could be your perceived need for aging in place or any of your clients' current needs. But it's simple. It's just do you, are you looking at renting or owning? How many bedrooms, stairs or no stairs? Really, that's for us to assess if two level or single story. What kind of building do you want to live in? And then there's an option at the end. If there's other things that we need to consider. So I'm going to share my QR code. If any of you would like to take it right now, you can get out your phone and scan that QR code. And again, I'll send all the information to Cassandra and as much information as we can gather on this, that will really help us make some, some decisions. And ultimately, all this information I'm gathering is part of our fair housing work. And that will help us to set goals for the next three to five years of work within our department. Any questions?
Do the bonus points kind of work like, you know, some people got four point O in high school, but some got four point three? And you just feel like, how did that even happen?
That's a good question. So we're not really sure just yet. It's, it's an idea that the committee's looking at and we have to make sure that it's legal to give preference points for something like that. But in early conversations, it's an idea of a tiebreaker. So if you have two projects that are otherwise equal, if one has these bonus points, it may make more of a decision in, in fundings, but we, we don't know yet. Yeah. Yes, Carl.
So, this is Carl. Just to clarify, this is this would be information that could be used to improve the accessibility of designated affordable housing or housing projects that get funding, that get some sort of government funding, right? Not just new construction in general, right?
Correct. So the, the hedges around me are affordable housing. However, the city of Bend is innovative, innovative in so many ways. And if we have good data and we have our partners giving us cost points, we can take this information outside of our area and share it with other developers, other agencies, even at the state level, and they can maybe do something with it. I'm not sure, but my hedges are affordable housing.
Okay, thanks. And then I noticed there was a question in there about stairs. I can see why you might not want to get too detailed in your survey. But I wondered if you also considered asking about other accessibility features like doorway widths, different bathrooms, different kitchens and so on.
It's a good question. Doorway widths are, to my understanding, and I'm not a designer nor a builder, that is implied in my understanding with building affordable housing that's accessible, doorway widths are part of that formula. Other things I, I have to get back to you because I'm not sure how much is required by the law and how much is considered additional, but it's all something to look at at this point. And if you have a need like that, if you need accessibility for vision impairment, not just wheelchair access, please put that in number five on that survey, just so we can consider it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Is, is there any such thing as like inclusionary zoning where we require a certain percentage of homes to be fully accessible or a higher level of accessibility?
You are speaking my love language right now. Um, yes, so we, as a city, we do have that opportunity that would, it feels like it's a little further down the line. But every city and jurisdiction can decide to write in code greater restrictions or greater, greater requirements than what the, the, the basic law requires. And Andres has done this work. If he wants to jump in and add to it, I would gladly have his support because I know he did this work too. But yes, every city and jurisdiction can make that decision. It's, it's possible. I don't know how many actually do. It's part of my research right now.
It, it sure seems to me that, and I think it's in response to the requires, the requirement that we become more dense or it's just all new homes seem to be two stories. Just seems like there are so few single home, but story homes out in the world at all for in this, in new construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's keep talking Barb because as I, as I gather more research and having conversations with the state level and different developers, if I find states that have done that, I'll bring that back to this committee and to the Affordable Housing Committee and keep that conversation going.
This is Nick. I'm an architect. So California does require more accessible units. They're, they're more adaptable. Whereas Oregon, it's, there's type A and type B. Type A units are obviously more accessible, type B are less. But there's minimums that within the code, but are you talking about increasing those minimums from those codes? Those are more for like apartments, multifamily type of things. Are you talking more about single family?
I was thinking single family.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be still my heart. That's all I have to say. Any other questions you, I'll be sending Cassandra information and you're welcome to give me a call or send me an email as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number nine, COBAC Strategic Plan, City of Bend Accessibility Subcommittee Meeting Updates. Do we have someone from the Improving Transportation and Infrastructure Group that would like to talk about their subcommittee meeting, if they had it, and what the results of that were?
Sure, that's me, I guess. This is Carl. We just met yesterday and the group was Whitney Bennett, Derek Hoffbauer, Nick Reden and We just met yesterday and the group was Whitney Bennett, Derek Hoffbauer, Nick Reden and myself. The two goals that we came up with in this area are. Number one, by the end of 2024, there will be one additional option for airport transportation in central Oregon. As I should say, accessible airport transportation. We will achieve this by advocating for the creation and funding of an accessible on-demand train, airport transportation option. TBD such as. A, an Uber, an Uber slash Lyft, uh, TNC based service. Similar to the existing um, PDX wave service in Portland. Or by partnering with one or more taxi companies. To ensure ADA compliance and incentivize purchase of vehicles. Or by creating a dialogue between the cities of Bend and Redmond and the Redmond Airport to come up with. Airport transportation solution or a possible partnership with Cascades Transit. Our second goal is within the next six months, um, or maybe that's a year, we'll see. We will organize a half day on-street walking event to highlight two areas. Within the city of Bend where accessibility gaps exist in public sidewalks and rights of way. We'll focus on high pedestrian traffic areas. At least one of these should be a place where a state highway, probably US 20, intersects with city streets. We'll invite people from all relevant, local government entities and nonprofit organizations. Such as City of Bend, ODOT, CET, Coka, commute options, Deschutes County, maybe others. So these are both related to things that we've talked about as a committee for a while, I think. The first one grew out of the discussion around accessible on-demand transportation. And we decided to focus it down just to airport transportation. Because we noted that as a particular gap right now, um, that exists. And at one where. The market may not fill, fill the need without, um, some. Encouragement or help or additional funding or coordination. With the second goal, I guess we were inspired by the recent walking event. That some of you participated in, um, exploring Ben's roundabouts and accessibility challenges that they posed. Anybody from the group want to add anything additional about our goals or what we talked about? Anybody not in the group have any questions?
Cool.
Great.
All right. Um, for the other subcommittee or the second one, uh, creating an accessible community group. I myself, John Halen, met with Aaron Rivers and Carl Burnett, and we came up with three different items. I'm gonna kind of breeze over them relatively quickly. First initiative would be to create a single webpage for disability-related services. Uh, this is, you know, this is near and dear to me because it's part of the reason I joined this committee. Is the idea of having a webs, a webpage that has all disability-related services on it such as. Hey, you know, your sidewalk's messed up. Who do you contact? Hey, there's somebody parked in a disabled spot. Who do you contact? Hey, you're looking to get taxi service. Who do you contact? Basically a, a one-stop shop and our, our idea is to have it distilled down enough. That all the info could actually be printed on a one-page PDF. It requires, uh, tracking down a lot of these answers. We also want to include services that are not specific to Bend, more like central Oregon, maybe Oregon, maybe Department of Justice. If we're dealing with people who are refused service due to service animals, for instance. So it would just be a one-stop shop instead of having a branching kind of like Wikipedia page of all different items. We hope to have a draft ready by the September meeting because a lot of this is just trying to figure out. Who do you call? And do those services, services exist? And if they don't, how do we create them? How do we figure out what tow company to call, for instance, or what relationship does the hit city have with the tow company? The second one, um, we were talking about, um, educating businesses on ADA compliance. And we thought a great idea would be to start a working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber recently has become very proactive, uh, about, um, sustainable causes and progressive causes, especially with housing. That's very encouraging. And I think having a working relationship with them where it's more of a carrot instead of a stick. Where instead of, um, hammering businesses about what they need to do. Instead, um, I know as someone who only recently joined the chamber, they have a lot of business resources that they allow for free. So there could be a relationship there where they have a webpage on their site that says, hey, what is your requirements as a business to be compliant? So it would be nice, I was gonna reach out to the chamber to start that relationship and that conversation going. Because education's always better than enforcement. The third one is a yearly COBAC barbecue. I think it would be good for social activity. Also, um, it's an excuse for me to, another excuse for me to try and get that trailer for committees. I thought we'd do it down at the Miller's Landing because, uh, I know that, uh, Ashley is working on a ramp there for kayaks. That, um, I don't know if it's even going to be started yet, but I thought it would be a good spot to. Be next to the river. Um, the idea would be to get fun, to do it in early June, probably the weekend before Juneteenth. Because I know Juneteenth's a very busy weekend for a lot of people. And we would hopefully get sponsorship from the city being hot dogs or sodas. And just have a, a social event where even people walking by can say hi and we can tell them about what we are and who, and what we do. So those are our three. Is there any questions? Great. Um, the third subcommittee, creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend organization. Who would like to speak on that?
Um, John, sorry, if I could pop back just for the, um, creating an accessible community. Outside of questions, is there any feedback from the larger group as a whole? Just to be sure, because this is a subgroup bringing information in and we will make sure if anyone would like to say anything that they can feel free to. That will be.
Great.
So I, is Amanda online?
No, I don't believe so.
All right. So, um, me being the only other perif member and, um, I'm sorry, I've been traveling and I just got back. My sister's getting a double mastectomy tomorrow. So I have been a little preoccupied and we have not met. There's really nothing to.
Okay.
And I think Stephanie, you had shared that you would be kind of plugging into the other groups as well. Yeah.
That's kind of how I envisioned. I think Amanda was on the same page too. Is that because a lot of the, the culture of accessibility kind of wraps into both, uh, the first and the second subcommittee. And I think that also maybe working very closely with Andres to maybe, you know, have some conversations there as well. But trying to figure out how we can, um, support the other two subcommittees to create that culture piece. Which is more of, more of an education of the community of what, um, what it takes to make an accessible community. And because we have, uh, you know, this huge influx, a few times a year of tourists. That it's, it's more than just, you know, um. Informing our community members, but it's also informing our visitors, um, so that we can maintain that level of, um, accessibility. Culture, um, throughout the year with everybody who comes to Ben. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we can do, but you know, Amanda and I just haven't met. But on your webpage thing, I think that's a great idea, you know? I've been working in with, um, various nonprofits for the last 15 years who support individuals who experience a disability. And that is always, I know Cassandra and I've had this conversation before. There, it does, there seems to be a lack of a one place to go to find out. Where you access or how you access a variety of services. So I'd be happy to at least report back on what I am seeing with the communities that I support. As where are there are gaps and where we might need to do some research. But then, you know, it's, it is. It's, you know, I think that's a, a great idea. So if I can provide some input on that, I'd be happy to. Maybe even come to one of your subcommittee meetings.
We might let you go.
So, so that's it. That's kind of where we're at.
Thank you. And I think you also, um, have another initiative since you both said that. Somebody would be joining the Human Rights and Equity Subcommittee for the Resources and Response to Discrimination. So that's also another thing that you're working on. So it seems like there's a lot, Stephanie, as it turns out. So, yeah. Thank you.
Cool. All right. Moving on, we have, uh, number 10, COBAC Business Roundtable. This is where people can share meetings they've attended, share firsthand experiences impacted by accessibility. And if there's anything you want to put on the future agenda, now is the time to speak. Anyone?
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, Nick again. Uh, I think, um, as this, um, the Hawthorne Bridge is starting to get more traction and funding. I think it would be great for, uh, that design team and, and the individuals responsible for that to, to come back to COBAC. And just kind of give some updates.
Cool.
Would, I, I know that it took place a little while ago. Sorry for the May, that's a, a typo. I should say July. But going back to May, since we're there, would anybody who participated in the event that was put on? Regard Nancy Stevens kind of initial idea that was sponsored by a lot of the groups want to share. I know Barb, you attended, um, obviously Derek, you were there, Whitney. Anybody, anybody else want to share kind of their perspective or what they learned or thoughts or feedback? I know it's a few months out, but we never had a formal chance to discuss it.
Yeah, I would add that we should do more of them. I think they're great opportunities and. You know, maybe finding ways to make them a little shorter, not taking the whole day. So we can get more participation because that was, I know that was a challenge. And maybe focusing on different areas. I mean, that kind of inspired our, our goal for our events is to highlight problem areas and. Bring elected officials and the engineers and the community members and the advocates together. And, you know, the media sometimes is, is helpful. I think they did a good job of covering it. But I think it really, A, it helps raise people's awareness. So when they watch it on TV. And they see folks with canes and blindfolds walking in roundabouts. I think it creates this sense of I need to watch out for that. So that's really good. I mean, I think it did kind of cover the bases on, on a lot of things, education, awareness. Um, and I think the more opportunities that we can do those. And have that kind of, um, cross pollination with different, with ODOT, City of Bend, you know, maybe inviting City Redmond, other places where they're building. Things and want to get a little more, um. Nuanced understanding of how these systems work with people who experience disabilities and how that impacts their travel and their way of life. So I just want to applaud the efforts of city for attending and for the partners to put this on. I think it was a great event.
I'm sorry.
Liz D. And then Whitney.
And Liz, I'm sorry, you were there too. I, I, I included you there.
Liz D.
Oh, who's next? No. Oh, Liz D. I didn't recognize that. Um, yeah. So yes, I, I attended that and, um. I just have to say that the, the overwhelming, like the thing that, that, uh, is foremost in my mind. You're thinking about that event and what I realized was how different every single roundabout is. It's designed differently. It's shaped differently. There are different sizes. The but, crosswalk buttons are placed in different locations. The buttons make different noises. Some are beeping. Um, I'm not sure if we saw any that actually spoke. But one, and one thing that I think is very helpful, what we heard was very helpful. You know, if you're blind and you're trying to cross the street and you've made three turns. Because of the, the shape of, of the sidewalk or the, the pedestrian a- access is you get very disoriented. It's disorienting because traffic doesn't quite sound the same. And it's disorienting because yeah, you've made all these different turns and you just don't remember what, what direction you're faced. So you're facing, so, you know, um, and then, and then I was hearing from someone else in a, a, a different event. That, um, you know, they, they've seen the crosswalk buttons that tell you, you know, they, or heard them. They tell you which direction you're headed. Oh my gosh, how helpful would that be? So, um, you know, overall, I just think, yeah, yes, more of these types of events, they're really interesting. It's great to meet people. It's great to talk to people who are actually, um, trying to use, um. The systems that, that we're, we're promoting and, um, experience them firsthand and, um. Just try to, um, have some consistency in, in our approaches, uh, would be. Very helpful, I think. So, yeah.
Whitney?
Yeah, this is Whitney Bennett. I, um, I attended as well and similarly just kind of seconding in both. Like what was said from Derek and Liz, the consistency was something we realized was not present and would be so helpful. But also coming from, I kind of, I reached out to Kim Curly, which helped organize this event, uh, a while back, just to get a. Summary of it and where the next steps are for that particular group. And the, there is talk from Coka, there's talk from other entities that participated on the next event. And it was kind of pushed out to May, but I think from the sound of it, it would be better. To brainstorm a little bit and what that and how that looks like for us, I'm not sure. But to get some kind of a request out there of more, um, to do it sooner rather than later. And what we would really want to focus on, as we talked about in our, in our, in our group about, uh, wheelchair access and connected sidewalks. But, um, hone in as a, as a group and then, uh, kind of be able to, to share that with the other pieces. So that we can move forward with another event sooner rather than later. So I think it was very effective and powerful for all of us that do verbal messaging about infrastructure. So it helped me think a lot about, um, just touting how great a roundabout is versus how it just varies a lot based on the user.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I also was able to attend and crossed Butler Market Road with, wearing a, while wearing a blindfold. And I honestly, Liz, you are speaking exactly what I was going to talk about. Is consistency in particular, and then, um, just what those signals are doing. So the, we use the pedestrian signal that has the pedestrian activated light. And at that one, when you push the button, there's a man's voice telling you. Danger! Traffic may not stop. And then that's it. That's all you hear. You know, caution, danger, this very, you know, again, you know, this man's deep voice. But then from that point, you, you just have no idea if the lights are still flashing. Or if you have more time to actually get across, um, the entire section. So I, um, um, I've actually already did, done a little bit of research. I got in touch with, um, ODOT because ODOT, I know, controls all of the traffic. Signals at intersections in the entire state. And it, I've learned that because I've asked them in the past to please help with, um, in particular messages for people crossing. And even though they're in control, even though they have all of those intersection traffic signals. They don't control those pedestrian crossings that we're putting in. In my humble opinion, we are doing a lot of them and they're great. I think it's a really good way to help people get across some dangerous spots in town. Um, and I completely agree with Leah, Liz. I just think consistency is always the best pathway to safety. Is if people are used to hearing the message, they know what it actually means. So it's actually the city that has control of what the messages and those pedestrian activated signals. I don't even remember what city staff person it was I was in talk, in touch with. But they also agree consistent. They would like them to be the same as all of the ODOT signals at intersections. And I know I myself in, you know, who knows where, which cities, which years. But I've heard a lot of messages from those, you know, it seems like sometime there's literally a countdown. But I've heard a lot of messages from those, you know, it seems like sometime there's literally a countdown telling you. How much time you have to get across the streets. Um, it seems like I've also heard signals that just beep the whole time to let you know. Um, if you've got enough time to get across the street. Um, so that, you know, like I said, I just completely agree with Liz. Um, to really take this on citywide, you know, it would, it would be a project. We've got enough of those crossings now that it would take some time to go around the city, push all the buttons, figure out what they're all doing. Try and decide, you know, what standard message do we want, change them all to that standard message. That'd be a process, you know, I I and so um I I just. This is kind of my roundtable thing, right, is maybe this committee wants to think about whether we want to advocate. For that process taking place, inventory our signals, find out what all those messages are. Find out what messages we're allowed to do, you know, so.
Can the first person that comes up with that list be the voice model?
Right, exactly. And is he gonna say, danger, cars may not stop? Or is it, please use caution, the lights are flashing, you know, right? You know, I I did, it just really struck all of us. It's funny that it's this just really kind of menacing warning. And then nothing, and then you're on your own, you know, just this, okay, thanks, but, you know, all right, thank you.
Couple topics.
Okay.
We have time.
Yeah.
Um, so one, um, so Casca's these trans, this is Derek Hopper. Uh, we just launched a new, it's called Transit Trails. It's a Mount Bachelor. Summer shuttle that stops at the welcome station, which is ADA accessible. Um, Winoga Snow Park, Swampy Lakes, Dutchman Platinum, Mount Bachelor. So. Just wanted to let everyone know that it's going really well. We have um looking for eight bikes on the racks. And then there's the ADA wheelchair ramp that we have space for, um, like accessible trikes and things like that. So. Working with Ben Bikes, um, and some partners that have engaged the city as well and potentially this group to do a an event. It's tentatively scheduled for August eighteenth in the morning from nine to ten. Um, just to kind of doing awareness of the service, try to get some different user groups out there and potentially take a trip up there and go to Mount Bachelor. And explore some of those amenities. So it's going well. Um, we're hoping to, it's a federal grant that that I wrote in twenty seventeen. Um, so it's been a while since they we were awarded the funding. Um, we're looking to see if we can get the grants uh reobligated for next year. We didn't have enough drivers last year to do it. So just want to do kind of a. A promotion on that, let everyone know that it is accessible. And then there's the hall trail path. Hall trail that's a paved path that goes back to Ben. So we're seeing a lot of folks go up there, ride the trails and then actually just come back to Ben and.
Oh, cool.
Take a one-way trip.
Yeah.
Uh, the second is that we're working on um our uh new Dial-A-Ride uh form and that. So our Dial-A-Ride is our. Ben system, it's eligibility-based, but allows uh people with disabilities to be able to utilize our service. It's been free since the pandemic. Um, to be able to go to doctor's appointments anywhere within the city of Ben and we're working on making that form more accessible. We're learning. From our partners at Coka. Thanks, Stephanie, for letting me bring this to the committee. Um, a a couple of weeks ago, but that Adobe has a lot of challenges um with accessibility. And so we're trying to kind of work around that. So any of the information that I can bring is to how to make like our fillable PDF forms more accessible. Um, I'd love to, you know, bring that to the city of Ben and and start weighing in, you know, they're they're suggesting us using having word documents as backups. Because Adobe is just not great in the in the readers that they're using. So. More to come on that. I think maybe the next meeting I could bring a copy or we could share it online and. Um, maybe get some feedback from this committee because we want our forms to be accessible, to be able to be utilized um with. For people, make it easier for people to be able to fill out these applications online.
And Derek, I would just say that Lisa Larson is a subject matter expert in all things accessible documents. So we would love to work together. Yeah.
It's easier to do it actually in in Adobe than it is um in Word.
Is it? Okay, maybe we're just missing.
A little bit more accessible for visual.
Okay, yep, I would love to connect with them.
Hooray.
We have two more, but um try and make it quick.
Yeah, um Liz and then Carl.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Thanks, Derek. Um, I'm very excited about the shuttle to the to up to the the mountain um to the snow parks. Um, and and I I'd lost my connection, so maybe I missed it. Um, are you considering that for winter too? So that we can, the cross-country skiers can also get a ride up to the mountain without driving? Please?
Where in the winter, we were historically stopping at the Virginia Meisner Snow Park. Um, but so few people actually use that to cross-country ski. That we just kind of stopped offering it, but I think if somebody wanted to use it, they could, you know, ask the driver if it's okay, or we could re-explore. Actually having a stop there, it just never really gets utilized, but if there's demand.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the parking lot's been been very crowded and I was thinking maybe this is an opportunity for a social event. You know, like, okay, we're all gonna meet and take the shuttle and we're gonna ride up to the mountain and have a picnic and then come back and not drive.
Okay, Carl.
I was wondering, Derek, about uh Dial Ride, whether. There would be any changes to the requirement to have a physician. Fill out part of that form and also whether um it will still be required that you're. You have to be unable to ride the fixed bus network in order to be eligible for Dial Ride.
Yeah, so that's part of the process is that it does need a doctor's note. If you have a like a permanent disability. Like if you're, it's someone who's blind, Nancy Stevens, she doesn't have to go to the doctor. She just. Has to resubmit the form every three years so we know she's, we have her current contact information because that's what they use to contact us. Um, the second part of your question. Remind me what that was.
Will it continue to be the case that you have to be unable to ride the fixed transit?
Oh, yeah, that's part of, um, it's called travel training. So because it's a federal. Brand, because we're, it's a federal program, we actually need to confirm with people that they're. Able, if they live a quarter mile from the bus stop and they're able to use fixed transit. It is preferred from a kind of efficiency standpoint. That they be able to utilize that existing system. Um, if we deem that that's, you know, that they can't access the bus stop or there are barriers in the way, then we'll grant them the Dial-A-Ride access. But it's, our system is be is gotten really full right now. It's at capacity. We have more and more people. Um, applying and joining it. And so I think, you know, the more folks that we can get to use the regular system, if it works for them. That that's what we try to encourage as part of a travel training program. But I think there are exceptions and if there are exceptions, you know, bring those to me and we can kind of figure out a solution for that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we have to move on. Item number eleven, Accessibility and Equity Manager update.
Hooray. Um, I will be brief with what we have available. So um. Uh, the ADA turned thirty-three on Wednesday. Um, so that's a big deal. It's our civil rights legislation that. Um, necessitates uh equal treatment of those individuals with disabilities. Um. Also want to take a moment to also um credit Nancy Stevens for the work that she did, um, a community member. She's blind. And she um is an advocate for all things accessibility, um, something I took away from. The activity um when we were all out at roundabouts specifically was a statement she made that. She essentially and effectively avoids the entirety of the west side of Bend because there are so many roundabouts. Um, and what specifically that, what implications does that mean for us when we're talking about equal opportunity? And full access for all of its citizens. So something to consider. So thank you to Nancy. Um, also want to thank Lisa for um providing us the lunch and she has also gotten a a cake to celebrate the eighty-eight thirty-three. On it, it has a vague reference to the disability flag um and Pride Month is also disability pride is also taking place July of this month. So thanks, Lisa. Please get a slice on your way out this afternoon. Um, I wanted to let members know and John and Carl are aware of this, but we will be hosting a welcoming week event. Um, in September, I believe it's either going to be September ninth or tenth. Those details will come out in these next couple of days. Um, but Party Planning Committee, if anyone is interested in joining, how fun. And we've got quite a few HTRAC members that are interested. Um, and essentially the the paragraph that we submitted to the city, um, we received funding. Um, and we're having food, um BIPOC vendors, um potentially a spoken word. An opportunity to create uh an equity piece of artwork. Um, so I think it'll be a really great time. So again, details to follow. And if anybody's interested, please let me know. We'd love to have you as part of the planning, which would be great. How fun is that? So. Um, Lisa and I are also looking and keep an eye out for an email. Um, we're looking to get um member um bios for our COBAC website. We want to do a little bit of personalization on there um to showcase the diverse uh talent and knowledge and backgrounds that all of you have. Um, and also what got you into this work to really engage with community. I think that's a great way also to to coincide with. The group of becoming a more accessible community by by doing that on our website. So. Um, great opportunity there, email to follow. Um, as a reminder, there is no August meeting. And we will be having a mixer input for feedback or anything that you'd like to think of if we want to do. Um, Liz's idea of going on the bus to Bachelor with a picnic, that's an option. Um, but we will coordinate as uh August rolls around, which is just around the corner. Um, anybody have any input or feedback on a mixer or thoughts on preliminary thoughts on what that looks like? Great, okay. I will be in touch and we will mix and we will meet um in August. Uh, and currently I am seeking one COBAC member to join the Transportation Fee Roundtable Listening Sessions. And those are going to be taking place potentially two or three times in August, September and October. And that's an opportunity to lend an accessibility and equity lens to the work that we're doing. In terms of listening about the transportation fee that may be in place. If you'd like more information, let me know. Um, I'd love to connect you with Sarah and Russ who are hosting those listening sessions. Um, I also, in the spirit of the thirty-third anniversary of the ADA, wanted to bring your attention to. The Disability Visibility Project and StoryCorps and what they are doing right now. So it kind of started with a book that's by Alice Wong. It's called Disability Visib- Visibility, A First Person Stories from Twenty Twenty-First Century. Um, and it's a compilation of really fantastic um short stories, eulogies, um speeches. Um, from individuals with disabilities and the diversity that they bring. Um, and so the book, I can't say enough great things about it. It's amazing compilation, but that was, it came out about three years ago, but they're doing this project for the thirty-third anniversary. Where they're partnering um with StoryCorps and there's these different ways that you can record remotely. Um, and share your personal story of disability um or the impact that it's had on your life. And so nationally and internationally, they're getting a huge flux of of stories to continue to make the visibility of. Uh, you know, indivi- individuals in our communities with disabilities, present and visible and that their stories are heard. Um, so I think it's a great opportunity and welcome you all to um take a look at that if you have a minute because you all have so much free time, I'm sure. But we're the project nonetheless. Uh, we discussed the welcoming week. Um, and. This is the the pitch that we gave. Um, welcoming week is something, if you aren't familiar with it, takes place in September. Organizations, communities bring together neighbors of all backgrounds to build strong connections. And affirm the importance of welcoming and inclusive places in achieving collective prosperity. So this is going to be a great opportunity for us to co-host with uh HTRAC. Um, this is a natural opportunity. And one I hope that there will be many um more in the future for. Um. We were going to revisit and I think we could do this via email just for the sake of time. Um, John had brought up this idea of revisiting the five oh four. At fifty project because if I, it was up to me, I'd sign you up for all sorts of projects, but if you, if you'd like to rethink the commitment to this or some folks are interested. I'll bring that to an email online along with the other information that we've shared. Um, and Carl, I know you'd said if if folks have a strong opinion one way or another, I think we've got a couple of minutes for that, but. Um, just in the interest of time, I might defer that to email if that's okay. And that is, that is it. We sped through that. So off to Barb.
Oh, thank you. Um, let's see, I uh honestly, I've been on vacation. I'll just say that straight up. Uh, that Brooks project, yeah, you guys, I'm not the big, the greatest fan of that. I've spent far too many years knowing, looking for money for transportation projects when there's no money there. Um, I have advocate, I am the one of the people that has advocated for that Drake Park Footbridge. Um, that to me is something that needs to be not, you know, we have no choice. We have got to replace. At least the deck on that bridge. Um, everyone would like to replace it with an even better, bigger, wider bridge. Um, it's complicated because it involves a body of water, involves a state river. At, but I, and so because of that, somebody said, oh, Barb, it's just going to take a couple of years just to get through the regulatory problems with that. And uh, but someone else said, well, in that case, just do suspension bridge on both sides. Don't touch the water. Don't touch the old pilings. I don't know if there's any actual opportunity for that. But either way, those funds are from transient room tax. They're supposed to be spent on tran- on tourism facilities. It's supposed to be a link to tourism. And then I think that's really it for me, you guys.
Nick, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just had to, um, this is Nick. Uh, I just had a question for uh Cassandra and Lisa, I guess. Like, uh, just asking about how the barrier removal requests are going as well as uh sidewalk improvements. If if I haven't, may, I missed last meeting, maybe there's something discussed at that, but I'm just curious how that's going.
Um, generally as a whole, it's going well and we have a really nice flow and we work really closely with um Adam over in Streets. If there's an issue and submitting of tickets and so everything to my knowledge is going smoothly with what's going on.
Yeah, we received like four or five of them, but they're not true barrier removal requests. Um, that because there's a difference between you and customer service request. And they actually should have been customer service requests instead of barrier removal because there's a difference because barrier removals. Uh, requests are um submitted by people that have disability. Not advocate.
I have a, so I was walking in front of a restaurant downtown that's a habitual offender. And I submitted it again and it led me to a, it said, it asked me if I had a disability and I said no. And it took me to another site, which was much easier to use that didn't require me to shrink my photo down to thumbnail size. And I submitted that as a barrier removal request and I never heard, like, where does that go?
Yeah, I wonder if it went to customer service request instead.
Or permitting, permitting typically helps with um restaurants downtown.
So we have two barrier removal request forms, one for.
One's customer service. Yes, one's customer service request.
I would.
The other one's a barrier removal.
I would say no, but I'm happy to take this offline and just have a conversation about where those go.
I was happy earlier in this meeting when this came up uh about the 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 form and accessibility. My knowledge is, we have a lot of forums, a lot of ways to contact for different kinds of service requests. And I think they used to be throughout the website and you had to know which one you were, and I. I think they got moved. They're all on the same page now, which to me seems almost more complicated. Now you have these four, one of them goes to the permit department, one of them goes to accessibility. There's a full sentence of text about what the difference is. So, see, I think we're working on that in general.
Okay, uh, the August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three City of Bend meeting is canceled for a summer break. And we'll reconvene Thursday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three from one to two thirty PM. Remember, that's one PM start, not twelve. And is there any further business?
Great meeting.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at one thirty-one.